Tommy Morrison? The sixth special session of Imena Trenta Quatronali Hesletur in Guahan is called to order. Just to be sure that everyone is clear, we were called into session by the governor on March 2 at 1:00 p.m. pursuant to a message whereby he revoked his call to session on Bill 15-S and further called the legislature into session on the revised version of Bill 245 before us today, which has been marked Bill 16-S. I shared with each of you the opinion from our Legislative Bureau on Friday, yesterday, that the governor was without authority to revoke his call to any session once it has convened or to call another special session throughout the duration of an existing special session. I continue to find this opinion valid in light of the analysis and case law provided by the Legal Bureau. However, without waiving the legislature's right to challenge the actions of the governor, we will proceed for this special session in conformance with the Attorney General's opinion that the governor's call is valid. I would additionally like to reiterate the prior actions by the legislative body in regards to the three earlier special sessions called by the governor this week. Bills 248-34 LS and 249-34 LS, both relative to establishing sales tax, were referred to committee and have been set for a public hearing on Thursday, March 8 at 9:00 a.m. Bill 15-S was also relative to a sales tax and set for a public hearing on Friday. I just want to thank you, my colleagues, for your attendance and your reply to the call to session tonight. And Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to adopt the sixth special session agenda for March 3, 2018.
Is there any objection to adopting the agenda? Any objection? No objection. Motion passes.
Madam Speaker, I move to waive special session agenda items 2 through 6.
Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, motion carries. Clerk, please take the roll.
Senator Adal. Senator Ugin. Senator Castro. Speaker Cruz. Senator Asfaldon. Senator Stavas. Senator Lee. Senator Morrison. Senator Munya. Senator Nelson. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Siniklis. Vice Speaker Tulahe. Senator Torres. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On the motion to waive special session agenda items, I'm sorry, Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to waive special session agenda items 8 and 9.
Are there any objections? No objections, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, I move that the message from Imago Laing Guahan be appended to today's special session journal.
Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, I move to waive special session agenda items 11 and 12.
On the motion to waive these agenda items, is there any objection? Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, I move that introduced Bill 16-S be deemed to have been given its first reading.
On the motion, are there any objections? Hearing no objections, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, I move to excuse members not present for today's special session.
Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, motion carries. Mr. Majority Leader, you are recognized. Oh, Senator Lee, you are recognized.
What is, Madam Speaker, and colleagues? I'd like to make a motion to refer this bill to the Committee on Education, Finance, and Taxation.
On the motion to refer Bill 16-S to the Committee on Education, Finance, and Taxation, is there any objection?
Objection.
All in favor of the motion to refer the bill, please raise your hand. Please hold your hands up just a little longer. Motion fails. Mr. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move then to place Bill Number 16-S on the second reading file. And although it hasn't had a public hearing, nor do we have a committee report on the bill that has been sent, in the governor's message, he indicates that, with two exceptions, the bill is identical to the engrossed version of Bill 245-34, which was voted upon by the Committee of the Whole at the session on February 28, but which failed to pass. The exceptions are, one, instead of reverting the BPT rate from 6% to 4% after one year, the increase rate instead sunsets on March 31, 2019; and, two, the bill requires the Special Economic Service Work Group to meet on a weekly basis in order to collaborate and address the FY 2018 revenue shortfall and the FY 2019 budget. The governor states, further states, that in his opinion, the public interest requires that the engrossed Bill 245-34 be reconsidered with these two new amendments included. So the motion is to place Bill 16-S into the second reading file.
On the motion to place the bill in the second reading, is there an objection? There's an objection. All in favor of placing the bill into the second reading, please raise your hand. Motion fails.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recess until tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. in order for the members to be able to further reflect on this particular session and hopefully be able to continue with discussions tomorrow morning.
On the motion to recess until 10:00 a.m., Senator Sinagastin, did you have an amendment to that?
No. Madam Speaker, I just wanted to ask a question to the body that, being that 15-S was revoked, that it doesn't need then a public hearing because we're discussing another bill? Could I get a clarification on what am I supposed to do with 15-S on Friday next week? If it's been revoked, then there's no need for that.
I don't think it's been revoked. The AG's opinion did not discuss the revocation of 15-S, and so I believe that public hearing should proceed, but we can discuss that with counsel.
Okay. Thank you.
Prior to the hearing, all right, Mr. Majority Leader, could you please restate your motion?
So my motion is to place Bill 16-S into the second reading file, and I, with the understanding that, once the bill gets placed on second reading, I would like to further move that we go into the Committee of the Whole and ask the Director of the Department of Administration to come in because there, some members have indicated that there are some questions that they would like to have answered, and I think that going to the Committee of the Whole certainly would be helpful to this body as we continue our deliberation on Bill 16-S. So if we don't get past 6-S, but, you know, I mean, going into the sec, putting the bill on second reading, we can't get into the Committee of the Whole, and we'll be here all night long looking at each other.
All right. Is there any objection to that motion? Objection? State your point of information, Senator.
Madam Speaker, if we can clarify what the specific motion is and the action that we are deliberating on as a body.
Majority Leader, could you please restate your motion?
The motion was to place Bill 16-S on second reading, but I also want to make it clear that a follow-up motion will be made to go into the Committee of the Whole and to ask the Director of the Department of Administration to come before the body to answer certain specific questions. And I think that's the only way we're going to be able to make progress here. So, you know, so placing it on the second reading is going to be followed by that motion to vote in Committee of the Whole, and quite frankly, if we can't get into the Committee of the Whole, we can sit here and debate it all night long. If it gets down to the voting file, I'm not sure that we're going to make any kind of progress. So we got to at least go into the Committee of the Whole and get that additional information.
Senator Ugin, you're recognized. Are you amending that motion?
No, Madam Speaker, I have a point of order in terms of...
State your point of order.
The motion, because he's regurgitating the previous motion that just failed, did not have sufficient votes, so it would proceed in a fashion where the body reconsider's the decision, his previous decision, and then, once that motion passes, then his motion is very appropriate. Otherwise, I would suggest to the mover of the motion that he consolidate the two thoughts into one, so it's not the same motion being considered by the body. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Rodriguez, did you have a point of order or an amendment to his motion?
I don't know what it is, Madam Speaker, but I'm asking that, or if, yeah, if I can pose it as a motion to reconsider the actions of the body, that I want to ask my colleagues to please consider placing this bill on the second reading. I'm prepared to work and stay here this evening. I have an amendment to make on this bill, and I'm hoping asking our colleagues to please reconsider.
I know. All right. Mr. Majority Leader, are you withdrawing your motion to recess to 10:00 a.m. tomorrow? Have you withdrawn that motion at this point?
Sure, I'll withdraw that motion.
Thank you. So, Mr. Majority Leader, could you please clarify whether your motion is to go into the second reading and into the Committee of the Whole, or is it just to go into second reading?
My motion is to place Bill 16-S into the second reading and to go into the Committee of the Whole.
On the motion? State your point of order, Senator.
I'd like to confirm with legal counsel, but I don't believe two actions can be placed into one motion. I think they need to be addressed separately, and to one of the retiring speaker's points, I believe that it had been decided by this body, therefore, there would have to be a vote to reconsider the actions of this body about placing Bill 16-1-S or 1-6-S into the second reading.
I'm gonna, well, we can, would you like to consult with counsel? Okay, we'll have, at the request of Majority Leader, we'll have a one-minute recess.
All right, thank you. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to clear the slate, I'm gonna withdraw my motions and emotions that I have made, and I'm gonna move now for the body to reconsider the actions of the body with respect to placing Bill 16S on the second reading file.
On the motion to reconsider, so this is just whether we will reconsider or not? Do you agree to reconsider? Please raise your hand. Motion passes. Mr. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, I would like to move that we go into the Committee of the Whole for the purpose of bringing in the Director of the Department of Administration in order to end for the body to be able to ask questions that they may have. To go into the Committee of the Whole.
On the motion, is there any objection? We have a standing rule that says that all bills containing an appropriation shall be considered by Illesa Turan Guahan in a Committee of the Whole chaired by the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriations or the Chairperson's designee who must be a committee member prior to vote on final passage unless such consideration is waived by eight votes.
Point of order, Madam Speaker. I believe that it says that a reported bill shall be considered and moved to Committee of the Whole.
Bills reported to Illesa Turan Guahan, that's correct.
I don't believe this bill has been reported.
It was definitely sent to us by the Governor. I'm...
Well, then, the gentleman has just made the argument that we shouldn't be discussing it. We can't go into the Committee of the Whole. The motion was made earlier to refer the bill back to Committee because it hasn't had a public hearing and has not been reported out. So he just made the case.
Madam Speaker, if you can cite that specific rule?
Yes, well, I'm gonna rule that this is going to go into Committee of the Whole unless you want to...
Madam Speaker, if you can please cite that specific rule.
Waive that with eight votes.
Madam Speaker, I don't believe you are reading the rule correctly, and I would like the opportunity to see your citation.
6.04. Sorry, I think it's D3. D3, but that's my ruling, so we need to act on it.
Madam Chair, I'd like to request a recess to confer. I'd like to recess, to confer with legal counsel, to confirm that what you had stated...
Point of order, Madam Speaker. I believe you are already making a ruling. I don't think that this is debatable at this time.
With all due respect, Senator, I have already consulted with legal...
Madam Speaker, the rule says a bill reported to appropriations...
That's correct.
This is not reported to appropriations.
No, that's not what it says.
This was reported to the body, and so I ask your indulgence to confirm your reading with legal counsel.
Senator, you may consult with legal, but that's my ruling unless you want to waive it by eight votes, and I'm gonna read it to you one more time.
Point of order, Madam Speaker. It is not an appropriation bill. It is not an appropriation bill, and the rules are very clear that an appropriation bill that reported to appropriations shall go to...
May I read the rule?
Yes.
Committee of the Whole, period. Bills reported to Illesa Turan Guahan containing an appropriation shall be considered by Illesa Turan Guahan in a Committee of the Whole chaired by the Chairperson of the Committee on Appropriations or the Chairperson's designee who must be a committee member prior to a vote on final passage unless such consideration is waived by eight votes. So I am giving you the opportunity to waive this by eight votes.
Madam Speaker, the motion was to, by this body, to refer the bill to Committee on Finance, not Committee on Appropriations.
It's not been referred.
I understand.
Point of order, Madam Speaker. I do not think this is debatable. You already made the ruling.
I'm giving you an opportunity to make a motion to waive the Committee of the Whole. Would you like to make that motion, and we can vote on it?
Madam Speaker, I'd like to make the motion to object and challenge your ruling on the matter. I don't believe that this is an appropriations bill. It's very clear, because this body did make a motion to refer it to the Committee of Finance, not Committee of Appropriations.
That was one, Senator, that's irrelevant. That's one person's motion, the bill. If I may read the bill to you. Section four of the bill on page eight, use and appropriation of revenue. May I read the bill to you, Senator, so that you can understand my ruling? Section four, page eight, use and appropriation of revenue. The increased revenues derived from the increase of BPT described in this act shall be allocated accordingly. And then it goes on to... Do I need to read more? So, please, Senator...
Madam Speaker, my motion to challenge your ruling stands, and I'd like to call for a vote.
The motion is to waive the...
And I object, I'd like to... I'd like, I object to your ruling on the bill, and I'd like to call it to a vote.
The motion is to waive, otherwise you're out of order. Would you like to waive the Committee of the Whole?
Madam Chair, you had made a ruling that the rules apply and that we are mandated to go into Committee on the Whole as an appropriations bill, and I'd like to challenge that ruling.
I don't believe it's challengeable, but that's why they gave you a rule that says that you may waive it by a vote of eight. Senator, you may waive that rule by a vote of eight.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion to waive Committee of the Whole.
All right, on the motion to waive the Committee of the Whole, all in favor of the motion of waiving the Committee of the Whole, please raise your hand. Motion to waive the Committee of the Whole fails. Renowned Committee of the Whole. We will take a one-minute recess to call the Department, the Director of Administration, please, Sergeant of Arms, thank you.
This Committee of the Whole will come to order. Present with us here is Mr. Edward Burns, the Director of the Department of Administration. Vice Speaker, did you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Mr. Director, yes, may I ask? With an immediate enactment date of passing an increase of 2% to the existing 4% BPT rate, is it correct to state that the government of Guam will not realize these new and additional revenues until April 20?
I'm sorry, Senator, Vice Speaker, could you repeat what you just said?
If this bill was enacted immediately to increase the BPT by 2%, is it correct to state that the government of Guam will not realize these new and additional revenues until April 20?
If today is March 3rd, this body could choose to enact this legislation on any day it chooses.
I'm asking if it was enacted today, would...
I was going to go on to say, if I may, that...
Is it correct that we would receive the revenues on April 20?
Tax, BPT tax is due on the 20th of the month. So if it were enacted today, leaving aside the fact that three days of March have already gone by, the additional amount would be collected on April 20th.
All right. And what if the legislature passed a new sales tax of 2% on top of the 4% BPT and made that effective in 30 days as Bill 249 suggests? Is it correct to state that the government will not realize these new and additional revenues from this sales tax until possibly May?
It's possible. Some of these questions might be better answered by the Director of Revenue Taxation.
Is it possible that we could... If it's made effective in 30 days, that we would be able to realize additional revenues from sales tax prior to May? 30 days would be April?
Well, there is no sales tax legislation at the moment, so it would be up to the legislation to determine when sales tax would in fact be due.
Well, the bill suggests 30 days, and that's the bill that was also sent down by the Governor. And so he suggested, Bill 249, it's effective in 30 days. If it was passed today, is it correct to...
Why are we discussing the sales tax bill, though?
I'm just checking whether the income, the revenues, whether this procedure is better than that one at the moment, because that's the other one that we are facing. And so whether the revenues from this sales tax that's being proposed in the bill that the Governor sent down would be realized not until May at the earliest?
I believe that to be true.
Is it your position that if the Guam Legislature passes any one of these proposals to raise the BPT or create a new sales tax, that the fire and police stations will not have to close by 8:00 AM tomorrow?
I don't think I can really say what's gonna happen by 8:00 AM tomorrow. I think we would have to wait for this legislature to take a decision before a decision would be taken to change what the, you know, what the fire department is going to do.
Well, I'm asking you, as a Director of Administration, if you believe that, if it's your position that if we pass this, that they will not have to close by 8:00 AM?
If additional revenues are in fact realized, then some of the cost-saving measures which have already been implemented might be reconsidered. That question as to exactly what would happen would have to be addressed to the Director of the Fire Department.
Well, if we pass this tonight, will revenues be received before 8:00 AM?
No.
So do you think that passing this tonight would change whether they close the fire stations or not?
Again, that's not a decision for me to make. I'm only looking at the flows of funds.
All right, so how much cash will the Department of Administration collect by tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM if the Guam Legislature passes this proposal?
That's a matter for the Department of Revenue and Taxation.
Do you think it can collect any money by 8:00 AM if we pass this proposal tonight?
It seems unlikely.
How much... How will this bill... All right. Before the decision was made to close the three fire stations and the Hagatna Police Precinct, were you consulted?
I understand that the procedure to start that cost-saving process was initiated before I arrived at the Department.
So you've not been consulted in relation to the closing of tomorrow morning of the fire stations or the police station?
No.
What is the exact amount of cash that the Department of Administration or in your discussion with the fiscal team estimated would be saved by closing down the three fire stations for the rest of the fiscal year?
I don't know. That's a budgetary issue.
So that would not affect your cash flow, to your knowledge?
With closing down the fire stations, it will obviously save some cash outflow. The exact amount is a budgetary issue. If I may just go on to... The purpose behind all this was to reduce overtime.
Yes, but they haven't consulted with you about how much cash it would save and how much cash you'd then be able to use. What about for the Hagatna Police Precinct closure? Have you been consulted as to how much... What the estimated savings would be or the estimated cash that would be available to you if those were closed tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM?
These are matters for those departments.
So is it fair to say, then, that you do not know the amount of fiscal impact of closing the fire station at 8:00 AM? I mean, sorry, that Hagatna Precinct?
Again, the whole purpose behind this is to reduce overtime, and overtime is a payroll cost.
Yes, but they're threatening to close the fire stations tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM, and they're threatening to close the Hagatna Precinct at 8:00 AM, and news reports make it sound like the reason is because there's not enough cash to operate those tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM. And so I wanted to know whether, yeah, closing those are going to give you additional cash?
Respectfully, I don't think that is the reason. The reason is to save future outflows of cash.
Okay, so that's why I'm asking, how much do they estimate that those closures are going to save the government?
I don't have those figures because they were established before I got to the Department.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just respectfully request for Mr. Vince Ariola to maybe join Mr. Burns. He might have additional information that could help the Committee.
Okay, I don't have any, unless somebody has a problem about invite, asking the Deputy Director to join us here in the Committee of the Whole.
Do you believe he would have the answers that you do not have, Mr. Burns?
Well, Mr. Ariola was at the Department of Administration prior to Mr. Burns's arrival, so he may have more information.
Do you think he would have different answers than you, Mr. Burns?
Yes, I do.
You do? And you're the Director, right, Mr. Burns?
Let's take, we're gonna take a, just a two-minute recess, ask the Deputy Director to come in. Okay, this Committee is back to order, so...
Mr. Chair, may I request that the, if the members have not been sworn in... Mr. Chair, may I request that the, if the members have not been sworn in, that they be sworn in?
Yes, they've been sworn in.
This is a new special session? Okay, thank you. Mr. Ariola, have you heard the questions I've asked Mr. Burns? I just want to know then... I was asking what is the exact amount of cash that the Department of Administration estimates would be saved by closing down the three fire stations for the rest of the fiscal year?
The projected savings of overtime that we understand from Guam Fire Department would be about, to about $2.6 million.
You said $206 million?
2.6.
2.6. Is that 200,000 per pay period?
Comes to about 165, I believe, a pay period.
All right. And what is the exact amount of cash that the Department of Administration estimates would be saved by closing down the Hagotna Police Precinct for the rest of the fiscal year?
I don't, I don't have that. Again, that, that came from the Guam Police Department? Is that what you're asking?
I'm asking what is the amount?
I don't have that amount, not, not from the Guam Police Department.
Were you consulted regards to the closure of the Hagotna Precinct at 8:00 AM?
Yeah, we were, yes, yes, I was, Senator.
But they weren't, they did not tell you what the amount of savings would be?
It was discussed. I just don't, I don't have that information with me on hand. Again, Senator.
Shall we recess till tomorrow, Mr. Chair, so that we can get this information?
I would prefer to continue. And if we do not get that information by the end of the evening, we will then recess. But I would like to continue, so...
Thank you. Miss, all right. Mr. Burns, it does not appear that any of these savings will be immediate. Is it true that closing the fire station tomorrow morning and the police stations tomorrow, tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM will not provide any cash, immediate cash savings, but only cash relief throughout the remainder of the fiscal year?
Vice Speaker, a cash saving is a cash saving. Once you stop spending it, you're saving it from that point onwards.
So what is the estimated cash savings of closing tomorrow morning?
Well, I think Mr. Ariola already answered that question.
Oh, for the...
For GFD.
Correct.
He said $165,000 per pay period, but he does not have the information for the Guam Police Department.
Just a point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Senator, Senator, if, if I may...
Wait, hold on a minute. What's your point of order, Senator?
I have, I have a point of order, Mr. Chairman. I think that some of the information, and this is based on sidebar discussions, but the recognizable savings of $2.6 million is inclusive of overtime pay and closing down these particular fire stations. So I think there has to be clarity in terms of the information being disseminated and provided to the speaker, the Senator that's asking the questions. Because the total figure, $2.6 million, may be correct, but how much is actually going to be realizing cost reduction by closing these fire stations versus inclusive of the overtime? Because overtime is one component of that. The other component is how much would it cost the people of Guam by closing these fire stations? And I think that the first responder, lack of services, is a higher cost than what we're presently paying. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Thank you. Is the governor currently authorized to cover $200,000 by transfer authority, Mr. Burns?
That's a budgetary... That's a budgetary question, which I would prefer Mr. Carlson to answer.
Do you know the answer?
No, I don't.
Do you know the answer, Mr. Ariola?
Senator, DOA does not handle the governor's transfers. That all goes through BBMR.
So you don't know whether he's authorized...
No, I wouldn't know. That's not my function.
All right. So, just to confirm, Mr. Ariola, then. A bill passed tonight on either a BPT increase or a new sales tax will not yield any immediate cash inflow until April or May, correct? Do you agree with Mr. Burns earlier?
Depends when that effective date is.
Well, for the BPT, the effective date is, is immediately. And for the sales tax, the bill says it would be effective in 30 days. So did you hear our questions earlier? All right, with an immediate enactment date of increase of 2% to the existing 4% BPT rate, is it correct to state that the government of Guam will not realize these new and additional revenues until April 20?
That's correct.
And if the legislature passed a new sales tax, according to Bill 249, that adds a 2% on top of the 4% BPT and made that effective in 30 days, is it correct to state that the government will not realize these new and additional revenues until May?
That's correct, and we're facing a $67 million cash shortfall since February 1st.
Would you like to yield some of your time?
I just want to ask him one more question, Mr. Chair. Is it, do you have any discretion as to whether the fire stations are closing tomorrow or the police department is, precinct is closing tomorrow?
Do we have any discretion?
Any discretion? Is it your decision?
No.
Do you have any...
That's, that's the governor's call. He's the chief executive of the government of Guam.
All right. And so this bill, passing it tonight, would not give us any immediate cash flows. And the cash savings from closing the Hagotna Precinct, you do not know. And the cash savings from closing the fire stations, you're estimating to be in future pay periods in savings and overtime costs of 200,000?
2.6 million, about 165.
But that would not be immediate? That's not tomorrow? That would not free up any cash for you tomorrow?
Again, we're going through the end of the fiscal year.
All right, all right. I have no more questions right now, Mr. Chair. I may reserve to come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Buenas tardes, gentlemen. My question to you is, what is the present-day cash balance of the general fund?
As of today, we had, let me think, 7 million in the bank. And I believe, if my memory serves me correct, about 5 million, negative 5 million book balance.
On Wednesday, we were in here in Committee of the Whole, and Mr. Burns, I had requested that DOA provide us, provide les futuras, read-only access of all Guam line agency accounts. And it's our understanding that the banks will allow it if DOA gives us the authority. And you said you would speak with your lawyers about that. So several days later, I'm asking if you have a response for me from your legal counsel, Mr. Burns?
Cash flow is under the strict purview of the Governor of Guam. And that's been discussed in many hearings with the Appropriations Chair, Speaker, BJ Cruz.
And is that, that was the, the response from your legal counsel? If so, could we please get that in writing?
We could get it in writing, sure. But that's, that's the, that's the, again, cash flow is the, under the strict purview of the Governor of Guam.
Of the Governor of Guam?
Organic Act. It's in the Organic Act. He has complete control.
We're not asking for purview, Mr. Ariola. We're just asking for read-only access.
That covers it.
If you could...
We, we can, we can seek and we can give you an opinion. That would be fine.
Okay, and your response was 7 million in the bank and a negative $5 million book balance, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I reserve the balance and have other members ask questions. Sutus Masi, Mr. Chair.
Senator Rodriguez?
Hafedeh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and Hafedeh, Mr. Burns, and Mr. Ariola. You know, I think we've gone down this road. And the situation we have now is that drastic measures are being taken that really, at least from my opinion, should not, should not be taken. Jeopardizing the health and life and safety of our people at this point, at this point in time is really something that needs to be stopped. We can't move forward with, with doing that, knowing with the discussions we've had with the, with the fiscal team, that the, whatever is passed here today in terms of any increase in BPT or establishment of a new sales tax doesn't, doesn't net us revenue until the following month, whenever that's effective. But I do understand the position that the administration is taking. And, and so we're, we're at this point now. So, Mr. Chair, I have two amendments that I'd like to, well, the first one I'd like to, to move first. And then the second one, if the first one fails, if we can get the staff to circulate the amendments, please?
Give one to the Chair, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, our body was very clear a few days ago when we rejected the proposal to increase the BPT from 4% to 6%. I believe there was 10 of us in this hall that said we're not going to increase the GRT. Now, we, we felt that there were other avenues. One of, one of, one being the sales, establishment of a sales tax, which is going to have a public hearing later this week. I did also at that point proffer an amendment that, that I believe would be able to, to net us additional revenue, at least on an interim basis in, in, you know, in, before any sales tax is implemented, if it does eventually pass. But this, I believe, would, would address, at least partially, the cash situation that the administration is saying is going to occur within a few months of this fiscal year. And so this amendment that, that I do have in front of us is provisions that were part of Bill 230 that was introduced by the governor and had a public hearing. This deals with the way banking institutions are taxed regarding, this is relative to how the, the formula in coming up with what their GRT obligations would be. This amends it. Part, part of this, the second part of this, of this amendment as well, Mr. Chair, deals with the qualifying certificates that our government does provide insurance companies. We know that the, that the governor has issued a moratorium, but I believe enacting it into statute has a stronger force and effect that ensures that no QC's are renewed moving forward. It also has a provision here that establishes a health insurance premium fee. What this does, Mr. Chair, is immediately tax health insurance premiums that are, are made by insurance companies. We know from information from the Insurance and Banking Commission that the industry collects about 250, 260 million dollars a year in all health insurance premiums. This industry has a qualifying certificate that abates their, their GRT, their BPT, their corporate income taxes, corporate dividends, and some other taxes that are specifically in their contracts. And so the people of Guam does not obtain any of those tax revenues. And at the time that we are in today, the emergency crisis that, that we're in, you know, this is, this is, this is an option that I believe, since we have rejected the idea of any increase in BPT, would at least get the administration the cash that it needs, at least be able to factor that in. It's not going to account for the $67 million shortfall, but based on information we receive, this would net us, these two amendments would net us about $20 million a year. And this does not have a sunset, sunset provision. I am open to anyone who wishes to include a sunset provision that would allow for this to happen immediately, for us to collect this immediately. Until such time, there is another solution, whether it be a, perhaps if people do change their mind about increasing the BPT or the establishment of a sales tax. This avenue, Mr. Chair, ensures that, you know, that we do everything we could before asking our people to pay more. And you, we're, we're very strong in your position and speaking to the public that before we ask our people to take more from their, to dig deeper from their pockets, we've got to exhaust all avenues. This industry, both industries have enjoyed significant tax holidays. And at a, at a time like this, we're asking them to, to partner up with us and be able to, to accommodate this request. And as I said, we're open to a sunset, I'm open to a sunset provision that would allow us additional time to come up with a long-term solution. But this, if accepted, will ensure that closures of fire departments, closures of police precincts are reverted, and as well as any, any other attempts to, to establish a 32-hour work week for our workforce, especially for critical departments that deals with health and education. So I submit this amendment to the body.
Before we continue further, I'm going to ask Sergeant of Arms to find, get those other members who are not in here. Let's take a one-minute recess. Since we don't have everybody in here, I'm going to call for a recess until tomorrow morning. Yes, Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm definitely not going to object to your decision, but I just want to highlight and ensure that our people of Guam know that the governor in today's fiscal year 18 budget has a 15% transfer authority to prevent the closure of fire stations and the Hagatna Precinct. So there is flexibility in the fiscal year budget at this time for him to be able to ensure that that doesn't close and affect the public safety of our community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, this committee is in recess until tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock.